Good morning, we're gonna get started. And if we can have a little quiet, it will be helpful. Thank you. Alright, the members will take their seats. Any visitor, please retire behind the rail. And this morning, to give our invocation, we have our own spiritual leader, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell. She will say our prayer this morning. At this time, I would ask all guests and visitors to please rise.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, and my council colleagues with this honor and privilege. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for another day. Another day that you've gifted us with, that gives us the opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve others. We prayed last time for help when it comes to crime in a special way. We thank you, Lord, that you've allowed us to have hearings to try to reduce crime in our city and beyond. And we're asking you, Heavenly Father, to help us today in a special way to deal with those who have problems with mental health. One of my staff members, your father, our Heavenly Father, has a sister whose family members lost a 10-month-old and a four-year-old that were funeralized yesterday. And Heavenly Father, I learned yesterday about a family that belongs to my church where a mental health 29-year-old male waited for each member of his family to come home, killed his mother, his stepfather, and his brothers, six and 17-years-old. So Father, we need help, we need guidance. We ask that you bless this council in trying to find some solutions to crime and also to mental health, also to find a way to help people who have so many problems that they turn on one another. And Heavenly Father, we ask that you to help us to be forgiving people. Help us to be open vessels that you can use because we serve you in love to one another through our jobs as public servants. And finally, Heavenly Father, as always, we ask that you bless those who are homeless, hungry, bless those who are incarcerated, bless those who are living on the streets, bless those who need homes and those who have so many problems and can't see their way clear. And we thank you, Lord, again for this privilege of service. We ask that you bless all who are here, guide our steps, help us be all that we can be to do thy will through service to others. These blessings we ask in thy name and for thy sake, amen.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Our next order of business will be the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 24th, 2019. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you.
Hold on, Councilman. Please be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 24th, 2019 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 24th, 2019 stand and approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and our Journal is approved. Our next order of business requests for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Leave shall be granted to Councilman Johnson. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to thank everyone who has come down today to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope that your stay here is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come again. So again, thank you for being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution recognizing David Shaw. With Mr. Shaw and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Heenan, Councilman Green, Councilman Squilla.
Mr. President, this too is a special privilege for me. I don't know when I didn't know Brother Shaw. And he knew Lucian before me. And we've tried to work with him as he lives his mission and tries to help other people for longer than I can remember. I wanted to say how much we appreciate him while I still had the opportunity. And that is why we wanted to present this City Council resolution today recognizing and honoring David Shaw for all the work he's done for the blind and disabled community. Whereas David Lee Shaw was born in Macon, Georgia, and moved to West Philadelphia over 35 years ago. At the age of 13, Mr. Shaw had a sunstroke while picking cotton and lost his vision and...
Whereas family and community are important to Mr. Shaw, he raised 15 children over the years who produced wonderful grandchildren and great-grandchildren. He attends Unity Baptist Church in South Philadelphia, where he is a senior deacon and... Whereas at 85 years of age, Mr. Stroll is still very active in fighting for equal rights for blind and disabled. With the assistance of Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, he has been able to attend the National Convention for the past 15 years and before that, many more years from help from Lucian E. Blackwell. Additionally, he has attended state conventions in Harrisburg that have worked to implement new laws and ideas for the blind and disabled community and...
Whereas, when Mr. Shaw goes to Harrisburg, he represents the delegation from Philadelphia, the John F. Kennedy Chapter for the Blind. Mr. Shaw became president in 1993 and has served as president for 10 years. And the three-day convention hosts over 1,500 blind and disabled people from all over the country. Everyone comes together and brings ideas to better enhance the community and...
Whereas, these conventions have inspired more people who are visually impaired to go out and vote. They even gave a demonstration on a new voting machine that are here in Philadelphia. The conventions play an important role in educating the community on new bills and laws that are being considered and what can be done to assist.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors David Shaw for all of the work he has done for the blind and disabled community. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to David Shaw as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition. Congratulations.
And the Chair want to recognize Mr. Shaw. Were there remarks?
Yes, I want to thank Janie Blackwell and her husband for sponsoring me many times to the chapter meeting. Your mother, John F. Kennedy, when he first was ranked for president, he got killed. And we named our chapter after him, John F. Kennedy's Chapter for the Blind. And Janie Blackwell and Lucian Blackwell have sponsored me many, many, many times to the different conventions. And I thank y'all very much and may God help y'all and I pray for y'all each day that God send over.
Councilordies. Thank you and congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla and Councilman O'Neil, who presented a resolution honoring and congratulating Patrick O'Donnell. With Mr. O'Donnell and those accompanying him, please join the councilmembers at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just say, we don't give resolutions too often to retiring city employees, or we wouldn't do anything else here except that. But every so often, there's somebody who's so special that we can't not bring them in here for a resolution. And Patrick O'Donnell lives in my district in Fox Chase, but he, as Councilman Squilla told me, has just been invaluable to everyone, particularly the Chair of the Streets and Services Committee. And there are a lot of people here in the audience who just came for Pat's resolution presentation. So, Pat, I want you and your parents and everyone else to know that this is unusual, but well-deserved. Honoring and congratulating Patrick O'Donnell on the occasion of his retirement following 35 years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Philadelphia and its citizens. Whereas Patrick O'Donnell graduated from Cardinal Doherty High School and Randolph Skill Center in 1982. Afterwards, he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps as a mechanic working on Harrier jets. He has exhibited a great sense of pride for the City of Philadelphia and has faithfully served both his city and country. And whereas Patrick O'Donnell began his career with the City of Philadelphia in 1985. Patrick started as a custodial worker for the City of Philadelphia Health Department. In 1988, Patrick worked for the Philadelphia Water Department as a water meter reader. In 1989, following in both his parents' footsteps, Patrick was hired by the Philadelphia Streets Department as a semi-skilled laborer. Both of Patrick's parents worked for the Streets Department from the late 70s through the early 90s. Took about a guy working his way up. Whereas Patrick O'Donnell worked his way up through several supervisory positions within the Streets Department, ending with Technical Service Manager. In 2012, Patrick transitioned to the City of Philadelphia Department of Licenses and Inspections as the Director of Operations. Mark, I'm doing your... overseeing property maintenance and business compliance and...
Whereas, Patrick O'Donnell returned to the Philadelphia Streets Department in 2013 to accept the position of Right-of-Way Manager, and thank God he did that. In 2017, Patrick O'Donnell was promoted to Transportation Director of Operations. And whereas, Pat O'Donnell is an honorable man, but exemplifies all the characteristics of a model city employee. Throughout his decades of experience with City of Philadelphia, Patrick has always been considered by many to a go-to guy to get things done. Never letting bureaucracy or red tape stand in the way, Patrick would always go above and beyond the call of duty. If Patrick could go and get you an answer, which was rare, he would always find someone who could. And also, answer emails at 11 o'clock at night or be available over early morning meetings. Not many city employees took their job as serious as Pat O'Donnell. Patrick never once asked for attention in this type of person who works well behind the scenes. Patrick O'Donnell is a dedicated employee with a well-respected reputation for working and responding to emails any time of the day, morning, nights, or weekends. Whereas Patrick O'Donnell has worked tirelessly throughout his career to build relationships with numerous government agencies, elected officials, and their staffs. He also played an integral role in the development of several noteworthy projects, including but not limited to Live 8, the Republican National Convention, the Democratic National Convention, the implosion of Veterans Stadium, and the construction of the Kimmel Center. In addition to orchestrating helicopter lifts in the downtown area.
Mark, your back. Whereas Pat O'Donnell, this could have been 10 pages long for all the work he did, but we did cut it short. It's nearing an end. Is a devoted Philadelphia Eagles fan, has lived his entire life in a city brother-in-law and happily married to his lovely wife, Terry. They reside in the far northeast section of the city in Fox Chase neighborhood. They are proud parents of six children and two grandchildren. Whereas Pat O'Donnell's tenacity to succeed has been his own personal drive, Patrick is one of a kind and the city will miss him and his vast institutional knowledge and expertise when he departs. Pat O'Donnell is loved by his wife, endured by his children, respected by his staff, and will be missed by all. And whereas Pat O'Donnell has spent countless hours on snow duty, working many thankless weekends at his desk, Patrick's greatest pleasure moving forward in his retirement will be not have to worry about which category snow emergency the city is under while he relaxes on his couch with his hot chocolate. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor, congratulate, commend, and thank Patrick O'Donnell on the occasion of his retirement following 35 years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Philadelphia and its citizens. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Patrick as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body.
Thank you. And before before we hear remarks from Mr. O'Donnell, I'd like to recognize Jose Aguirre from Pico.
Good morning, everybody. It's still morning. I'd like to thank you, Pat, for all of the service that you have given the city as well as Pico. On day one of my job, you were the first person I met, thankfully. With a city that has so much going on, so much congestion under its roads, you helped keep projects moving forward as best as possible. And on behalf of Pico, we'd like to thank you and present you with a picture of our Crown Lights.
Thank you, Jose. And now we will hear remarks from Pat.
So much for a quiet exit. I want to thank everybody up here with me. Without them, I would have never been able to succeed. It's been a humbling experience working for the City of Philadelphia. And I appreciate all the experiences and all the memories that have been made here within the 35 years that I've been with the City of Philadelphia. It's been over half of my lifetime. And every day was an experience, good or bad, it was still something that I can memorialize and appreciate while I'm retired and relaxing at home. I know that there's a lot of good people that are still here. And if I can ever be of any future assistance, please reach out to me. I'm always there to help out and give some guidance and direction. Thanks for recognizing me. It is an honor and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And let me just add that it was co-sponsored, this resolution, co-sponsored by all members of council and signed by the council president.
Alright, Councilordies.
And maybe after a year or so, we can get Pat back as a consultant.
And congratulations, Pat. Thank you for your service. Our next order of business is Communications. And the Chair requests that the Sergeant-at- arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. And Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on October 30, 2019, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on October 17, 2019. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body an ordinance amending bill number 190152, approved June 19, 2019, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2020 through 2025 Inclusive. And an ordinance amending bill number 190153, approved June 19, 2019, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt a Fiscal 2020 Capital Budget. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Special Gasoline Tax Fund, and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the General Fund, the Grants Revenue Fund, the Aviation Fund, and the Water Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, the Aviation Fund, and the Water Residual Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Ruth Street. And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Jasper Street and East Clearfield Street. And an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Alcart Street. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a lease agreement with Mount Ari Betsida Manor for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 7800 Ogonts Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by South 50th Street, Pentridge Street, South 51st Street, and Willow's Avenue for further conveyance. And an ordinance approving the Eighth Amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the Point Breeze Urban Renewal Area being the area generally bounded by Washington Avenue, South 25th Street, Reed Street, the rear property lines of the 1,400 and 1,500 blocks of South Taylor Street, Tasker Street, South 25th Street, Moore Street, and South Broad Street, including the Eighth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan. And an ordinance authorizing the city solicitor on behalf of the city to enter into a multi-year contract with a provider of codification, editing, and marketing services to produce printed and electronic versions of the Philadelphia Code and related services. And an ordinance authorizing the city treasurer's offers to enter into one or more agreements with FIS avant-garde for the installation and maintenance of an information management system for use by the treasurer's office, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Morning, Mr. President.
Morning.
As a girls' high girl, girls' high alum who bleeds gold and white in that case, I have one privileged resolution that I am pleased to introduce today. It is co-sponsored by councilmembers Janie Blackwell, a graduate of Bartram High School, Curtis Jones, a graduate of Overbrook High School, Maria Quinones Sanchez, a graduate of Roberto Clemente Promise Academy, David O., a graduate of Central High School, Thesyrrel Parker, a graduate of... Parker, a graduate of Parkway High School, Al Taltenberger, a graduate of Northeast High School, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, a graduate of Both High School, Cindy Bass, a graduate of Parkway High School, and you, Council President, a graduate of Edison High School. And I would like to be recognized further after the introduction with very, very brief remarks.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the launch of the inaugural Philadelphia Public School Homecoming Weekend, celebrating alumni of the School District of Philadelphia.
Councilwoman, she recognizes Councilwoman.
Yes, Mr. President. Our parents get to choose what they're able to do when it comes to public charter, private, Catholic, and parochial schools, all play a part in the educational ecosystem in our city, each with its own unique advantages. Today, I'm proud to introduce a resolution that lifts up the alumni of Philadelphia Public Schools as we prepare to celebrate Philadelphia's first homecoming weekend. And I want to acknowledge and say thank you to the incredible team who helped make this Philly Homecoming Weekend possible. Today joining us are Donna Frisbee Greenwood, please stand, John Barber from the Fund for Philadelphia, and Ella Battle, also from the School District of Philadelphia, as well as Greg DeShields, who make up Philly's Host Committee. And then, as always, I salute my staff who are gone without the E, and I want to salute Hanea Sharp Brown, formerly with my staff, now Director of Advocacy and External Engagement at the Philadelphia School District. We want to salute all of them and say a huge thank you for what promises to be a wonderful, wonderful weekend with some amazing artists. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so busy checking out where these other folks went to high school, it's sad, but today... I'm like, where did you go then? Today, I introduced three bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 1932-100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and Strategic Development Area to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing Neil and Linda Pacavina, owners and operators of the newsstand Linda Cart, located at 43rd Street and Woodland Avenue, to construct, use, and maintain conduits in, under, and across the corner of 43rd Street and Woodland Avenue.
For the committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Office of the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into one or more agreements with FIS avant-garde for the installation and maintenance of an information management system for use by the treasurer's office.
For the committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing Stephen Cook to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1301 through 05 North Howard Street.
For the committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Hina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I have one bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Sheffield Avenue from Walker Street to Cottage Street.
For the committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two privileged resolutions on my behalf and two on Councilman Johnson's behalf and one ordinance on his behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance approving the Eighth Amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the Point Breeze Urban Renewal Area being the area generally bounded by Washington Avenue, South 25th Street, Reed Street, the rear property lines of the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South Taylor Street, Tasker Street, South 25th Street, Moore Street, and South Broad Street, including the Eighth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan.
For the committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Jeffrey D. Newhill on the occasion of his retirement as the 10th General Manager of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing November 19, 2019, as Transportation Security Administration Appreciation Day in the City of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia firefighter Joseph Ripert for his consistent bravery and courage and for earning the firefighter of the year award.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Interact on the occasion of the organization's 50th anniversary.
Also this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Keanu Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. Before I introduce these bills, I just wanted to take a moment and recognize the students from El Centro de Estudiantes High School, previously located in Norris Square and now in Frankfurt. El Centro is a non-traditional school of young people that the system failed the first time. And I had a lively discussion among their projects, they're working on gun violence and human trafficking. They're paying attention, and I'm glad at the level of engagement around our young people who are trying to get it right, sometimes even when they're deterred. So where are the students of El Centro? Can stand up. And with that, I have five administrative bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And an ordinance amending bill number 190152 approved June 19, 2019 entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2020 through 2025 Inclusive." And an ordinance amending bill number 190153 approved June 19, 2019 entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt a Fiscal 2020 Capital Budget," and an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Special Gasoline Tax Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Water Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Aviation Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Water Residual Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Ruth Street.
Those five bills just read by the chief clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have three bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, "Zoning and Planning" to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14702 entitled, "Floor Height, Floor Area, Height, and Housing Unit Density Bonus by amending the provisions of mixed-income housing."
For the committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 7 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, "Housing Code" by adding a new chapter, 7200 entitled, "Preservation of Affordable Housing."
For the committee.
And an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of a proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council of an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to revise and clarify the restrictions on city officials and employees with respect to political activities.
For the committee.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to revise and clarify the restrictions on city officials and employees with respect to political activities.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to enter into a lease agreement with Mount Ari Betsida Manor for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 7800 O'Gance Avenue.
For the committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Dunn.
Good morning, Council President. I have three bills. I'd like to be heard on the transfer bill and also the health bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Title 6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, "Health Code" to require the distribution of certain educational material related to opioid prescriptions and substance use disorder treatment.
Want to speak after all three bills are read?
And an ordinance amending Title 6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, "Health Code" by amending Chapter 6200 entitled, "Preventive Medicine" to require the reporting of information related to substance use treatment, drug overdose treatment, and related information to the Department of Public Health. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2020 from the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance provision for other grants, to the General Fund, the Managing Director.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dunn.
Thank you, Council President. The first bill I want to speak about is the transfer of $500,000 for ACT, the Animal Control or Animal Shelter in Philadelphia, cosponsored by 11 members of council, it was 12 of us total. I'm introducing a bill today to request almost $500,000 in additional funding this fiscal year to support much-needed staffing and programs for ACT Philly. This funding request is being introduced as a separate bill because the mayor's administration is declining to include the ACT funding in its $70 million request as part of its 2020 mid-year transfer. The ACT funding request is less than 1% of the administration's total request. Not only does this not make sense, it's completely unacceptable that the city would not provide adequate funding that's essential to saving animals' lives and allowing staff to work in better conditions. While it's important for the city to utilize the funding transfer to provide essential services and have money available to pay living wages, we cannot turn a blind eye to the inadequate conditions at our animal care and control facility and hunting park. I have pictures here, if anybody wants to see the pictures of what's going on at ACT. A first-class city needs to have a first-class animal shelter. Understandably, this funding request is not a silver bullet to solving all of ACT's issues, but it's an important first step. We need to take actions to provide resources and tools to properly care for our animals. We, as council members, have an obligation to all Philadelphians to take the necessary steps. I encourage all my colleagues to join with me in taking this step. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
I also wanted to speak on the second bill, the health bill.
Please do.
Thank you. I'm introducing a bill today that stems really from the hard work put forth by Council Member Greenly in his efforts to curb the city's opioid epidemic. I was very moved by his efforts and work in the spring, and I want this legislation today to continue the progress as we move forward on this important topic. The bill requires emergency departments at city hospitals to report quarterly to the Health Department overdose and withdrawal events and drug treatment referrals and placements. Additionally, it requires physicians at the time of prescribing an opioid to provide patients with information on non-opioid alternatives to control pain, the addictive properties of opioid medication, and where and how to purchase naloxone. This doesn't address all the issues, but it's a start. I feel this is a compromise to similar legislation brought forward by Councilman Greenly and the policies being discussed. Again, full credit, full credit to this. Legislation should go to Councilman Greenly for paving this road for us to seek solid solutions. I remember his speech in the spring that was very moving at the end of council. I never forgot that, and it's an example that I learned of how I can learn from my colleagues. So Councilman Greenly, this bill is really because of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Those three bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taltenberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Patrick O'Donnell on the occasion of his retirement following thirty-five years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Subcode A of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, "The Philadelphia Administrative Code," and Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, "Zoning and Planning" to revise certain provisions concerning building permits in the NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. And an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on certain portions of Elkhart Street, and an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Jasper Street and East Clearfield Street.
Those three bills will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. No bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And... Where's our committee report? There we go. Our next order of business is reports on committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Greenly for a report from the Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Law and Government reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Law and Government, to which is referred Bill Number 190386, entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 9800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, 'Landlord and Tenant,' by adding a new section 9808 entitled, 'Legal Representation in Landlord-Tenant Court,' providing for access to free legal representation to the City of Philadelphia's low-income residents facing eviction in landlord-tenant court. And Bill Number 190786 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 171400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, 'Non-Competitively Bid Contracts Financial Assistance' by making provisions to definitions, to contract and reporting requirements, to exceptions, and to enforcement provisions and making related changes to Section 2613 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, Ethics Related Matters Incorporated as Part of This Chapter.'" And Bill Number 190787 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 171400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, 'Non-Competitively Bid Contracts Financial Assistance' to provide for regulations and for special provisions for certain small-dollar contracts. Respectfully reports that as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation."
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so it's permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 190386, 190786, and 190787.
I get a second?
Second.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Think it has been moving probably second that the rules of council be suspended this day, so I have to permit first reading of Bills Number 190386, 190786, and 190787. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squill. For a report from the Committee of Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of Streets and Services reports 11 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
The Committee of Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 190080 entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a No-Truck Parking Regulation on Both Sides of Milner Street from Duncan Street to Orthodox Street." And Bill Number 190308 entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 307 by Striking from the City Plan and Vacating this southerly 20-feet-wide Portion of Vine Street from 17th Street to 18th Street." And Bill Number 190446 entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a No-Truck Parking Regulation on Both Sides of Ryan Avenue from Leon Street to Crispin Street." And Bill Number 190452 entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Number 44S by Relocating the southeasterly House Line and Curb Line of 10th Street from Packer Avenue to a point southwestwardly therefrom, and relocating the northwesterly House Line and Curb Line of Darian Street from Packer Avenue to a point southeastwestwardly therefrom, thereby widening said 10th Street and said Darian Street." And Bill Number 190764 entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of North Bouvier Street and Master Street, North Bouvier Street and Oxford Street, Francis Street and Ridge Avenue, Folsom Street and North 27th Street." And Bill Number 190782 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled, 'Sidewalk Sales' by Prohibiting Vending Along Certain Portions of Spring Garden Street." And Bill Number 190801 entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the University of the Sciences in Philadelphia to Own and Maintain Existing Pedestrian Scale Streetlights at 4514 through 22 Woodland Avenue." And Bill Number 190802 entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Park Regulations in the Vicinity of Mount Vernon Street and North 32nd Street, North 42nd Street, and Bering..." of Mount Vernon Street and North 32nd Street, North 42nd Street and Bering Street. And Bill Number 190803, entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Salford Street and Chestnut Street, Ludlow Street and South 51st Street, Chestnut Street and South 61st Street, Sansom Street and South 51st Street, Irving Street and South 52nd Street. And Bill Number 190805, entitled an ordinance permitting Chapter 12, 2700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permit Parking Districts by Establishment of District 39. And Bill Number 190806, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 1500 block of East Wingerhocken Street, 1600 block of East Wingerhocken Street, 1500 block of East Bristol Street, 1500 block of East Cayuga Street, 4300 block of O Street, 4300 block of Castor Avenue on both sides of the street. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squillow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of 11 bills that were just read into the record.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended, so I have to permit first reading this day of the 11 bills just read in the record by the chief clerk. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the Committee of Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Safety reports three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Public Safety, to which is referred Bill Number 180553, entitled an ordinance permitting Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity, by repealing certain provisions relating to temporary removal of firearms and adding a new chapter, 10, 2300, entitled Philadelphia Gun Violence Protection, establishing procedures relating to the relinquishment or seizure of firearms from individuals who present an imminent threat of harm to the individual's own self or others. And Bill Number 180969, entitled an ordinance permitting Chapter 10, 2200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hate Crimes, to increase the scope of eligible crimes and to provide for additional penalties for criminal conduct motivated by hatred towards certain characteristics of other persons. And Bill Number 190749, entitled an ordinance establishing the Safe Haven Law by amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity, by adding a new section prohibiting the possession of weapons at city recreation facilities, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit reading of these bills, numbers 180553, 180969, and 190749, be suspended, rules suspended, so we can read them first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended, so I have to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180553, 180969, and 190749. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. A note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed have had their first reading, they will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar on our next session of council. There are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, so the chair now recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 190835, 190836, 1903... 190767, and 190785. All the bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you. So before considering these resolutions and bill, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you have signed up at the table to my left, if you have not signed up to the table to my left, your name will be called. When your name is called, you go to the middle of the chambers where there's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we ask that you please adhere to your guidelines and conclude your remarks. Your testimony must be related to a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today. I want to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Sedell O'Brien. Commenting on 190607.
Okay, that works. Good morning. My name is Sedell O'Brien. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you. Today, I stand before you as a black undocumented woman. Each day, I face great adversity, whether it is due to my race, status, gender, or combination of all three. I have called Philadelphia my home for the last 19 years. Though I am not a citizen, I consider myself a local of the city. Mi nombre es Sedell O'Brien. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de hablar. Estoy acá como una mujer negra indocumentada y cada día yo confronto muchos desafíos con mi raza, estatus, género, o combinación de las tres. Philadelphia ha sido mi hogar por los últimos 19 años y aunque no soy ciudadana, yo me considero como una persona de esta ciudad. My act today is that you not only consider the role of domestic workers, but that you honor it. We must closely look at the role that the estimated 16,000 domestic workers play in our city. I have worked as a nanny for the past decade. Day in and day out, my responsibilities were to contribute to the emotional, intellectual, physical, and social development of the children in my care. Mi petición hoy es que considera el papel de las trabajadoras del hogar y también que nos honran. Hay 16,000 de nosotras en la ciudad y yo he sido una niñera por la última década. Cada día mis responsabilidades son para contribuir al desarrollo emocional, intelectual, físico, y social de los niños que cuido y que esos niños siguen ayudando a Philadelphia. The children that will one day continue to make Philadelphia a thriving city, some of whom will sit in the very seats that you sit in today. I have worked for a wide range of people, including doctors, lawyers, and small business owners. Through my care, I provide families with a peace of mind so that they could in fact contribute to the city. As a black and documented worker, I was never awarded the same in return. I have dealt with my fair share of lack of job security, shift in job responsibilities with no additional pay, disrespect among many other things. Yo he trabajado por mucha gente, incluso abogados y doctores. Cuando yo cuido a las familias, ellos tienen mucha paz que pueden contribuir a la ciudad. Y como una trabajadora negra y indocumentada, yo nunca he tenido la misma paz y he tenido muchos desafíos, incluso una falta de seguridad en mi trabajo y mucho disrespecto. Today, I not only speak for myself, but the community in which I represent. This bill will allow some of our most vulnerable communities to be protected and, most importantly, be treated like the decent human beings we have proved ourselves to be time and time again. Vote yes to the security of all people. Vote yes to the dignity of all people. Thank you for support and for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Our next speaker, please.
Steffi Boral.
My name is Steph, and I nanny a two-year-old and a 10-month-old. First, I want to thank those in the Law and Government Committee for passing the bill unanimously last week. We're all excited for this historic day. Mi nombre es Steph. Yo soy una niñera por un niño de dos años y de diez meses. Primeramente quiero agradecer a los concejales que ya aprobaron la carta de derechos en el comité la última semana. Estamos muy emocionadas por este día tan histórico. The mother of the domestic worker movement, Dorothy Bolden, started organizing in the late 1940s after her arrest for simply refusing to stay late to wash dishes for a white woman. While it may not be surprising, it is ridiculous that almost a full 80 years later, domestic workers are still minimized and disrespected, even though we are trusted to help raise your children and clean your homes. La madre del movimiento en favor de las trabajadoras del hogar, Dorothy Bolden, empezó el movimiento hace muchos años después de que fue arrestada por no quedarse mucho tiempo para lavar los trastes de una mujer blanca. Mientras no es... Nos sorprende mucho, es ridículo que 80 años después, las trabajadoras del hogar todavía son minimizadas y disrespectadas aunque tenemos en su confianza a sus niños y sus casas. In 1983, Bolden said, "A domestic worker is a counselor, a doctor, a nurse. She cares about the family she works for as she cares for her own. But domestic workers," she said, "have never been recognized as part of the labor force." Today, Philadelphia residents employ about 16,000 domestic workers who, on average, only earn $10,000 a year while continuing to face discrimination. Dorothy Bolden dijo que una trabajadora del hogar es una doctora enfermera y consejera. Cuida la familia como si fuera la suya, pero las trabajadoras del hogar nunca han sido reconocidos como parte de la fuerza laboral. Hoy hay 16,000 trabajadoras del hogar que ganan 10,000 dólares al año y mientras seguimos con mucha discriminación. Domestic workers currently lack protections that most workers have. I was once fired the night before I was supposed to work, not because of the quality of my work, but because the mother had worked out a trade with her friend and no longer needed me. I had no recourse. Las trabajadoras del hogar no tienen las protecciones que las demás trabajadoras tienen. Una vez yo perdí mi trabajo en la noche antes de que iba a trabajar porque la mama ya tenía otra opción y ya no me necesitó y no hubo nada para hacer. I'm fortunate that my current employers do understand the value of my work. Together, we drew up a contract which guarantees my rights as an employee, such as paid time off when I'm sick and notice of termination. The disrespect for domestic workers is deeply ingrained. We should not and cannot rely on the goodwill of our employers to do the right thing. We need the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights to bring to light this invisibilized labor and to bring dignity to the 16,000 of us in this city. Thank you. Wait, wait. I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna say it in Spanish first. Language justice, people. Soy muy afortunada que mis patrones actuales valoran mi trabajo y tengo un contrato por escrito que me da mis derechos. Hay mucho disrespecto para las trabajadoras del hogar y no podemos confiar en el bienestar de los patrones para hacer la cosa correcta. Necesitamos la carta de derechos para las trabajadoras del hogar para que nos ayuden. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Elena Bauer.
Good morning. My name is Alana Bauer. I employ a caregiver for my young child as well as a cleaner to help take care of my home. I'm here today to speak strongly in support of a Philadelphia Domestic Worker Bill of Rights. A little over a year ago, when my daughter was born, my partner and I decided to use a nanny share for 40 hours per week when I went back to work. Going back to work was hard, but it was made easier by knowing that my child is happy, loved, and well-taken care of by her dedicated and hard-working nanny. It was hard enough to follow the steep learning curve of parenting, and harder still to figure out how to create a dignified workspace in our own home at the same time. But we waded in and did our best. We prioritized creating a comprehensive written contract, clear expectations, paid time off, and making sure our nanny would be treated with the utmost respect in her workplace. A clear written contract means that the expectations and agreements are clear for everyone involved. It is much better for us and for our nanny. Paid time off is a benefit I absolutely rely on to take care of my own health and wellness and to be able to take care of my home and family. I assume the same is true for everyone, and providing paid time off is crucial to creating a dignified and just workplace for my child's caregiver. We provide 10 days of paid time off per year and unlimited unpaid leave. The basic benefits in this bill are absolutely crucial to every worker. I know how much I have relied on benefits from my own workplace, and the workers who make my work life possible deserve no less. But domestic workers should not have to rely on the good intentions or best efforts of their employers in order to have their work respected and their rights protected. We must make this the law in the City of Philadelphia in order that all domestic workers have access to these same rights and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Our next speaker, please.
Pat Eiding.
Chairman Eiding, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm Pat Eiding. I'm the president of the Philadelphia Council of the AFL-CIO. And I'm here for folks who need our help more than most others. I think workers, until they have the value of collective bargaining agreement and representation, we as a community have to make sure that we stand up and protect those people. And, you know, these workers probably are put upon more than any other workers in the City of Philadelphia or in the United States. We have the opportunity here, the City of Philadelphia, to move a piece of legislation that would join some states that are more proactive than others, and at least one big city of Seattle, to do what we have to do with workers until they have the right and protection of collective bargaining. So I'm standing here before you, representing 150,000 working families in Philadelphia, to tell you that this bill, like other bills that we passed in this chamber, protecting workers, should be passed today. We have to show the lead for this great state of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania where folks in Harrisburg don't have the moral dignified fortitude, if you will, to do the kinds of things that we can do here in Philadelphia. Please step up, take care of the workers that we can take care of until they can take care of themselves, and pass this bill. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Mas Nakawatise. Commenting on 190841.
Good afternoon. I'm Ed Nakawatase, and along with my colleague who'll follow me, Peter Lemms, we are members of the Working Group for the Abolition of Nuclear Weapons of the Germantown Friends Meeting. We are concerned citizens and Philadelphia residents. We are here today to support City Council Resolution 190841 that urges the government of the United States to enter the United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. The treaty calls upon all UN members, states, to totally abolish nuclear weapons preceded by a number of important intermediate steps towards that end. It is a brutal political reality that, at this moment, none of the nations that have nuclear weapons, particularly our nation, have agreed to sign this treaty. This must change. For three-quarters of a century now, all of us on the planet have had to deal with the fact that we have the capacity with nuclear weapons to destroy life on Earth as we know it. Early in the atomic age, at Hiroshima and Nagasaki, we saw the destructive capability of nuclear weapons. The massive loss of life, the destruction of entire cities, the loss of viable habitat, and the long-term effects of radiation. The situation has gotten worse since then. We now have larger thermonuclear weapons, many more of them, and more... We now have larger thermonuclear weapons, many more of them, and more nations have them. The building and maintenance of these weapons have been a wasteful use of the vast human and material resources of this nation. These resources have been conscripted in the production of weapons whose use would constitute, in legal and moral terms, crimes against humanity. We applaud the action today of the Philadelphia City Council in saying no to nuclear weapons. We are grateful to council members Gim, Squilla, Bass, and Green for sponsoring this resolution. Its passage would be a small first step, one of many steps that will be needed to be taken by many people in many arenas. Supporting the UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons is an expression of hope. The treaty offers a pathway out of nuclear madness and an achievable and necessary goal, however difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Peter Lemms. Commenting on 190841.
Super. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this resolution. And I want to take a minute to put it into context and why the City Council Resolution matters. Two years ago, the United Nations adopted a resolution banning nuclear weapons. The overwhelming number of UN countries supported that resolution, 122. It's known as the UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons and is unprecedented in scope. In some ways, it's quite simple. If you want to get rid of the threat of nuclear war, you need to get rid of nuclear weapons. Now, this treaty did not materialize out of thin air. It came from regions and countries around the world, in particular, the experience of decades from five nuclear weapons-free zones that cover Latin America, Africa, the South Pacific, and Southeast Asia. It was these movements of people and countries that don't have nuclear weapons that brought forward the ban. And why does it matter for us? We are the only country in the world that has used atomic weapons against civilians. And what happens here matters for the move, for what must be a global movement to challenge nuclear weapons. The City Council of Philadelphia would not stand alone in this initiative. The U.S. Conference of Mayors has passed a resolution in support of the treaty that represents 1,400 municipalities around the country. The state legislatures in California, New Jersey, and the state of Maine have also passed resolutions in support of this treaty. And municipalities around the country, from Baltimore to Washington, D.C., to Salt Lake City and Los Angeles, have also passed resolutions. Civil society is active in supporting these around the country. The ones in Philadelphia have been Asian Americans United, Brandywine Peace Community, Catholic Peace Fellowship, Germantown Monthly Meeting of Religious Society of Friends, the Granny Peace Brigade Philadelphia, WILF Philadelphia, Pennsylvania Nuclear Ban Alliance, and Veterans for Peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Joe, down to hell.
Okay. This is an official decree of the people, remandamis corwanto, and as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others, transfer private property to government, probably unlawfully. Cybercriminals are often hired as website security employees. Is the National Constitution Center using that mindset when hiring board members and employees? Are or were accused oath constitution law violators employed at the National Constitution Center? Are the New York Times, Washington Post, Philly.com, and others refusing to inform the people? An uninformed constituency is an oath violator's best friend. How can the people reelect candidates known for lying to God and violating their oath? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C. 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26 P.A., CSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 25 years is egregious, extraordinary oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color of law government must have its charter of government revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to play the fire. The sovereign people require oath constitution and law be enforced, and jail is required for all of you who violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow all of this monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
Nancy Ostroff. Commenting on 190839.
Good afternoon.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Ostroff, and I'm here to speak on Resolution Number 190839. I would like to thank Councilwoman Cheryl Parker and the entire council for inviting me to come and speak with you. I am a longtime advocate for disabilities and disability education. Approximately 12 years ago, as a result of two motor vehicle accidents in which I was rear-ended at full force two years apart, I had a C345 laminectomy and spinal fusion. My spinal cord was crushed. My left side was paralyzed. I learned to walk and use my left arm and hand again. Shortly after that, I saw a Facebook video in which a little boy, a little autistic boy, was being bullied. He was hit in the head with a board, and the nail in the board stuck in the back of his head. That was the day I started writing. In writing Shine a Light on Disabilities, which is the first-of-its-kind kindergarten-to-third-grade curriculum on physical disabilities, I found no law has been passed on disabilities since the Americans with Disabilities Act in 1990. Thirty years since any law, again, I say thirty years, since any law on disabilities has been passed in our country. What an educational injustice we do to our very own children. A child with a disability gets an IEP or an individual education plan. The rest of the children in Philadelphia, in Pennsylvania, and in our country receive no substantial education on disabilities. By that I mean, if a child is reading a story on Helen Keller, they may talk about what it is to be blind. If a child with a hearing impairment comes into a classroom, they may discuss being deaf. But other than that, in our country, there's no real substantial education on disabilities. I wrote Pennsylvania State Senate Bill 571, which is the companion bill to Representative Dan Miller's House Bill 590, in an effort to have all children learn about disabilities in our schools and, God willing, help stop some of the bullying. What this would do is, number one, it would be the first law passed in America since the Americans with Disabilities Act 30 years ago. And number two, it would make Philadelphia, well, it would make Pennsylvania, actually, the very first state, the state for all children to learn about disabilities. I am humbly asking you to unanimously pass today's resolution in support of House Bill 590 and disability education in our schools for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Joe Cox. Commenting on 190841 and 190838.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Joe Cox. I'm running for City Council at large as a progressive independent. And the election on Tuesday. Please vote yes for Domestic Workers Bill because domestic workers are workers and everyone deserves equal rights. Stand with all workers, especially the most vulnerable. Let's make history, Philadelphia. And vote yes to a resolution urging the United States to divest in nuclear weapons. We have way too many as-is. We need to divest from war. Also, ACT needs funding desperately. Thank you for your bill, Councilmember Dog. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Doris Thomas.
Commenting on 190606A and 180409.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, City Council President Darryl Clark, as well as all the City Council members. I just want you to know with the first bill, with Wells Fargo, as far as unethical banking practices, there's also JP Morgan Chase Bank. And I will supply your secretary with all the documentation about the minorities, women, and veterans who lost their homes through housing foreclosure, through housing discrimination, as well as mortgage discrimination and predatory lending. So before you bring in JP Morgan Chase Bank into any more of the community, I see that they're down off of 17th and Walnut. I see that they have another location off of 6th and Market, as well as three or four more other locations that say that they're coming soon. I want you to know that JP Morgan Chase Bank president is Jamie Dimon. Mr. Jamie Dimon happens to make over a billion dollars, and it was a $13 billion settlement that I'm still waiting to receive my share of the federal bailout. So I'm looking forward to getting all the vacant and surplus properties by JP Morgan Chase Bank because I'm sure JP Morgan Chase Bank isn't interested in the surplus properties located here in Philadelphia because they're located in Wall Street, okay? And I want you to know that. Secondly of all, all the other properties that are government-owned buildings, I'm interested in them too, okay? Because we need to have some more luxury buildings and construction for seniors, military families, veterans, as well as people with disabilities. And we need to own a couple of the DoubleTree hotels as well as the Embassy Suites. So make that part of the list, okay? Thank you very much, and God bless everybody. And Veterans Day is coming up next week, so I'm looking for all my luxury. Okay? I want luxury homes from Chaney University. I want luxury homes for Villanova University alumni. I want luxury homes for Villanova-Chaney grads, and I'm a Catholic alumni. So I went to 45th and Chestnut. That's where I went. So all this luxury and construction going away, I want to make sure it's equal luxury. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany Green. Commenting on 190767 and 190606A.
Good afternoon. Good morning, oh, afternoon, wow. Okay, I'm down here to advocate for safe zones regarding Bill 190767, okay? And I just want to read this for those that say it's already in effect. Whereas the city of Philadelphia and its department license inspection have long considered it desirable for the promotion of commerce and other reasons to provide a mechanism to allow for in-limit circumstances such as accelerated review. So therefore, it is not already in existence. The reality is that they're considering it. And so with the accelerated review in gentrifying areas, that is really be, that would really be inhumane because you already have people being gentrified, and to speed up and provide a review in five days for order counter permits, building five- and six-story luxury home mansions in our community would be like beating a wounded dog, okay? But the other problem with the speeding up is the fact that it has an effect on damages to people's homes. You have nothing in place to address the damages to people's houses, crack. When you call 311, they talk about, oh, you need to get a lawyer, and that's a civil rights, a civil claim. Well, who's going to do that? Poor people. We didn't land on Plymouth Rock. Plymouth Rock landed on us. The reality is you need to supply something for damages to people's houses. Environmental health, you're talking about increasing demolitions. Well, you have asbestos, lead, you have old debris that they're knocking down. You're talking about in five days having all these demolitions going on and everything. People have asthma, respiratory illnesses, and oxygen problems, trash in the middle of the block and many of the sidewalk. The kids got to walk out in the street to go around it. You have daily disturbances, the knocking, the banging, going on from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, sleep disturbance, homework, the kids can't do homework and everything, traffic jams, bus detours. You have rerouting, you have paratransit complaining about construction, they're late picking up disabled people and everything like that. Bus detours, you got seniors disabled, and schoolers' kids don't even know where the bus is running down the street and everything like that. Then you got disrespectful developers and workers telling you, oh, well, we don't have to deal with you, and blah, blah, blah. And then you got street blockages from junk removal trucks, gas electric trucks, all these type of trucks. And so now you want to accelerate review on that? No, I don't think so. I think that we need safe zones, we need to put this bill on hold, we need to look at it because you want too much coming. And also, Bill 19606AA is an eminent domain bill, okay? Did you know developers have up to five years to use their permit? They buy the properties and let it sit there for up to five years, and they don't have to use the permit up until five years. So how are you going to be able to present that? The reality is people go into the hospitals, people get sick, the property might sit there for six months. If you're in the hospital, like I was, and then you go to rehab, you may not be using your property for continuously. So you're going to say just because you don't see a water bill or what you call, that you have the right to come and take their house? I don't think so. This bill needs to be put on hold again, and it needs to be looked at carefully. It's an eminent domain bill that you're pushing for. Thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you with the seminar.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gail Loney.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Gail Loney. I'm a block captain, and I'm speaking on Bill 190676 and 190606AA. I have submitted notes to both Council Sanchez and President Darryl Clark about 190767, but I really feel that the two of them are tied together to increase gentrification in my North Philadelphia area, which I have lived in all of my life. I have been all over the world and traveled, but it's amazing how my neighborhood remains the same for over 20 years. I'm concerned about the bills because they, as far as... I'm concerned about the bills, because they, as far as the accelerated permits, I live on a block that has, no lots have been owned from generation to generation, and I am seeing a huge insurgence of homes that my neighbors cannot seem to acquire for whatever reasons. The land bank that is supposed to be able to take the properties, make them available for citizens, are not cooperating. I put in for a lot within the fourteen hundred feet and never got a response. So now with this Bill 767 and 606, you're saying that because I live on the block, that fourteen hundred feet doesn't allow me to purchase a lot that's within fourteen hundred feet, but it's around a corner, because it's not a side lot? That's, yeah, something's wrong with that. In addition, the acceleration of the permits is allowing these developers to come in your neighborhood, suck up your land, do their development, and charge hundreds of thousands of dollars for properties that are inadequately developed. I have seen homes in my neighborhood that were supposed to be being developed, and it's trash. I have a contractor of my own, and I have gone and looked at some of these properties, and they're, they're, they're not even done well. So I have a problem with this, and on terms of, there's no community consideration. As far as the community is concerned, the fees that you guys are charging with regards to the millions of dollars that these properties are being charged and generating, those fees need to be a percentage of the whole project, not three hundred and fifty dollars, or seven hundred dollars, or sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the fact that our oversight as community members is being dissolved. We are being excluded from this process, and it's not right, and it's not fair. And I have a problem with the fact that, I'm concerned that it's being advertised and marketed to such a high level that we, as citizens, can't afford to live there or even purchase anything.
Thanks for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment. We will now move to our calendar. Mr. Decker, if you can please read the title of 190835.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the Second Councilmanic District, which would be transferred by the city to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority by convenience of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, oh, Councilman Jones? Councilman Jones, just for motion. Just move for the motion.
Move for the adoption?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, 190835 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, 190836.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Second Councilmanic District.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez. Oh, no, hold on, hold on, Councilwoman, Councilman's here. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, 190836 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190838.
A resolution calling for the creation of a Domestic Workers Standards and Implementation Task Force and appointing a nine-person task force to consider, analyze, make recommendations to the City Council's Committee of Law and Government and the Mayor's Office of Labor for the city on the legal protections, benefits, and working conditions for domestic workers.
And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Council President, before I call on the motion, I just once, want to get, once again, want to thank the Mayor's Office, in particular, the Mayor's Office for labor, Andre Devallier in my office, and all the employers and wonderful women who've participated in this process. As you know, we hosted a hearing in the Committee on Labor last year, and subsequently introduced this bill, and have been working through what has been a very collaborative process. I want to thank Pat Eiting from AFL-CIO, and all of the allies, sister unions, who've really helped us get to this place, and we really look forward to an implementation process that provides for education, information, and more importantly, some dignity for these women, for the great work that they do every, every day, for the, for the thousands of families in the city of Philadelphia. You are not alone. We are with you, and I appreciate the process in which we've undertaken this. So with that, I move for a motion to adopt the resolution.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution 190838.
A resolution calling on the General Assembly to adopt House Bill 590, which amends the public school code to add curriculum requirements for health classes across Pennsylvania to educate students in an age-appropriate manner about mental health, physical disabilities, and developmental disabilities.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, 190839 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190841.
A resolution urging, a resolution urging the United States of America's federal government to enter the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, which calls for the abolition of nuclear weapons among all United Nations member states to prevent the threat of nuclear war and devastating humanitarian consequences to Philadelphia and our international neighbors.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to give a thanks for all the folks who came out today and supported this important resolution, and to my colleagues who co-sponsored it and support it. I also just want to say a special acknowledgement of gratitude to Edward Mas Nakawadase, who came out today and spoke earlier with such powerful words. Born in internment camps and devoting his life to racial and economic justice and social justice work here at home, he was one of a handful of Asian-Americans who were part of SNCC in the nineteen sixties. He's devoted his life to Native American rights, to peace and justice in this world, and when we pass it, it'll be largely thanks to the hard work of many people, but just want to say a special acknowledgement to Ed Mas Nakawadase as well. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution 190841 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190... Councilman Heenan? Let me recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be reported as voting on the affirmative on Resolution Number 190835 and 190836 in my absence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That shall be recorded, and just for the record, it's quite obvious, earlier, Councilman Johnson asked for a leave of absence, but he is obviously here, so he is here, just for the record. All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Decker, 190606AA.
An ordinance amending Title 16 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Property by amending Chapter 16, 400, entitled Vacant and Surplus Properties, Chapter 16, 500, entitled Councilmanic District Development Program, and Chapter 16, 700, entitled Philadelphia Land Bank, in order to establish uniform procedures for the disposition of property by the city and city-related agencies to whom the city conveys property, and to amend the provisions governing the land bank.
This bill has been heard on multiple times. Mr. Decker, call to roll. Shall the bill pass finally? Thank you, Mr. Decker, for always correcting me when I make an error.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kuna Rene Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190611A.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14, 800, entitled Parking and Loading, by amending parking standards for historically designated properties.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kuna Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190613A.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14, 600, entitled Use Regulations, by amending use standards for historically designated properties.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kuna Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190655A.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to revise certain provisions of Chapter 14, 502, entitled CTR, Center City Overlay District, by amending the supplemental use controls for the old city residential area.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kuna Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190640.
An ordinance establishing a four-way stop on the intersection of 61st and Webster Streets.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kuna Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190717. I believe... Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190607.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9, 1100, of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance: Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination, amending Chapter 9, 4100, entitled Promoting Healthy Families and Workplaces, and adding a new chapter entitled Protections for Domestic Workers, all to provide protections for domestic workers and to establish remedial and enforcement provisions.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kuna Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Ayes are seventeen, aye. Ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting affirmative that Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190767.
An ordinance amending Subcode A of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, to further provide for timelines and administrative fees in connection with various permit applications, and to establish a special surcharge in connection with accelerated permit reviews.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kuna Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190785.
An ordinance amending Subcode A of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, to provide for fees for solar panel projects.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call to roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neal. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kuna Rene Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing the launch-
Mr. Decker, hold on, hold on one second. Just wait until folks leave. Thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Decker.
A resolution recognizing the launch of the inaugural Philadelphia Public School Homecoming Weekend, celebrating alumni of the School District of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Jeffrey D. Newpohl on the occasion of his retirement as the 10th General Manager of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing November 19, 2019, as Transportation Security Administration Appreciation Day in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Councilman Johnson.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Philadelphia firefighter Joseph Ripert for his consistent bravery and courage and for earning the Firefighter of the Year Award, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Interact on the occasion of the organization's 50th anniversary, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Patrick O'Donnell on the occasion of his retirement following 35 years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Philadelphia and its citizens, introduced by Councilman O'Neal.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Any speeches on behalf of the minority... And speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Yes, just very briefly inviting my colleagues and staff members to come to a briefing at 2:00 p.m. this afternoon to talk about supermarkets and food deserts and quality employers here in the City of Philadelphia, and I want to thank my co-host for this event, Councilwoman Parker. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and there'll be lunch.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. There being no additional speeches. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds, oh, Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First is that, you know, from time to time, I've heard other members of council, you know, recognize other staff that are leaving, particularly for law school, which seems to be very, very popular among city council staffers. And now I, too, have a member of my staff who's going to be leaving us for law school, and that's Christian Matozo, who's done a fantastic job as a legislative coordinator. So he'll be at Temple University, is at Temple University, and we wish him the very, very best as he continues his studies and becomes a big star in this town. The other thing I just wanted to mention, which weighs very heavily on my heart, is that as I was sitting here today, I was informed of the passing of Tom Page. Many of us in this chamber know of Tom Page and knew of Tom Page and his work that he did for many years at Freedom Theater, and he was just such a gifted, gifted individual who left such a legacy on so many of us, not just in city council, but in kids in the neighborhood. He just did, you know, he was just a phenomenal person. And so, you know, we're going to really miss him. He was a wonderful person, and, you know, I just want to make sure everyone knew and will provide information on the arrangements once they become available. So thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. There being no additional speeches. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November 14, 2019, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Council shall be adjourned until Thursday, November 14, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. Thank you very much.